Call the meeting to enter. Let's have the flick of allegiance.
Flick allegiance.
Staff would review of the minutes, any changes, modifications?
No approval.
Okay Larry seconded that, of course. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Excuse me Steve? Mr. Riley sir? How about some air conditioning maybe?
Fine.
Thank you. Okay, manifests would make its way around?
Yes, right here.
Resignations? Yes, we do have some resignations.
And the doctor when you're done Larry.
Just a little bit. Okay. We have the following resignations. Shannon Cole, teacher at Memorial School. Melissa Gallagher, special education case manager at the middle school. Suzanne Quigley, teacher for sixth grade.
You might want to go a little deeper.
Sorry. Can you all?
They have to share a microphone.
I think that might be the first time that I was ever asked to speak up. I tend to have a pretty loud voice, sorry about that.
I always have to speak up, they'll tell you that.
How is that? You are welcome. Can some? Can you turn up the gain on this one? Thank you. Okay, so we have some resignations at the Memorial School. Shannon Cole, she's a teacher of preschool. Melissa Gallagher, special education case manager. Suzanne Quigley, a sixth grade teacher. Deborah Galante, a special education teacher. And those were at the middle school. And the high school Samantha Radcliffe for art.
Make a motion to accept.
No moves.
Discussion? All in favor? And that is unanimous? Nominations?
None.
Superintendent's report.
Alrighty, well school is about, oh they know that's better. School is about to start. I'm just going to read this quick note that I sent to staff. Just summarizing, we're very excited to begin our second, my second year at the Sandbourne Regional School District. I'm really looking forward to this year as we continue to deepen our commitment to meet the needs of each student. The direction has become clearer since the conclusion of the entry plan process which focused on what is working, what we need to improve, and what steps we need to take to make our great district even better. This summer there were a lot of teachers in grades K through eight who attended training at Columbia University to learn best practices of workshop instruction. And this year we are recommitting to the use of writing workshops in the grades K through eight. But the practices of great workshop instruction will apply to any grade level. In addition to workshop instruction, we will be providing additional training and support in the best practices for professional learning communities. Our hiring process has been ongoing and I've enjoyed meeting our new staff. We have retained all of our administrative staff and our administrators continue to be committed to supporting our staff and students by working collaboratively to achieve our goals. We did have a fantastic retreat this week. Worked very hard to plan the year and talk about our structures to support student learning and the staff. So there's some important dates. On Tuesday, August 21st, we have new teacher orientation in the Sandbourne Regional High School Library from 8:00 to 3:00. On Wednesday, August 22nd, there's a competency-based and personalized learning mini boot camp for new teachers at the high school. On the August 23rd, it's our first day with staff. And the 24th is all staff will report to their buildings. A couple other items that I wanted to mention, we recently had another meeting of our superintendent's safety advisory council. And we are moving forward with plans to improve our responses to potential threats or incidents in the school. That will be happening, we'll have some information presented to staff at our launch day next Thursday. We'll be following up with some training in September and early October. We will be running some drills shortly thereafter. I did want to take a moment to thank Dr. Patricia Haynes, elementary school principal at Memorial School. And Robert Dawson, who is the assistant principal at the high school. They've taken the lead on some of that work and they've done a great job. I also wanted to report to the board that Mrs. Crotto and I have been working hard to continue to find efficiencies in our budget. We did recently meet with the bus company and we reviewed all of the bus routes and were able to save $36,000 by eliminating one bus route that only changed two or three bus stops by a little bit. So we were really happy about that. At the Memorial School, we received a proposal to rectify the safety concerns at the Memorial School. And the proposal was $250,000. That was very concerning to me, so I met with Mr. Riley, Mrs. Crotto, Dr. Haynes, and we walked through the building and tried to find a more efficient way to improve the safety of their front office and move the office operations to the front of the building. And I'm happy to say that we have managed to get that from $250,000 down to $200,000, down to $50,000. So we have saved $200,000 by just being creative and collaborative. I just wanted to quickly say that, you know, I have been here for a year now and I feel kind of, how do I say it? We have a really wonderful place that we are at. We have wonderful schools, wonderful staff. And meeting with the administrative team this week really, it's really fascinating to see how the team is working as a very collaborative group. And it was great to see them bantering back and forth and giving each other legitimate credible feedback about what they thought and in what directions to take. So I'm very optimistic about our year. Oh, I'm sorry. There are some nominations, Mr. Broderick. I apologize. Would you like me to read those now?
What a wonderful idea.
Kevin Berling, he'll be a special education case manager at the high school. Abigail Presby, an English teacher at the high school. And Felicia Formazano, special education case manager at the Memorial School. I believe you have the information in your packets, correct? Thank you.
Motion to accept?
No moves.
Second.
We've got a tie, we'll give Tammy that second. Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, committee re- Hello? Sorry. Committee report. You know you're up.
The policy committee met tonight and we were discussing the policies shown under age five and eight six on the next page of the agenda. We want to discuss those further and we have a lot to do tonight, so we're going to table those two items. I finished reviewing all of the notes from the New Hampshire School Board Association. I got the last batch of comments for sections D through F and K last week. So I spent this week reading through all the notes. We have about 150 policies to modify. Some are easy and some are going to be tough. But we're going to try to get a lot done this year and maybe do eight or nine per meeting, hopefully. See how it goes. And I guess that's my full report. We are meeting next week on Monday, hopefully.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Yes, thank you.
EISA will be meeting prior to the policy committee at 4:30 next Wednesday.
Sure, finance.
We met this afternoon and there's an audit going on, which is an end of year audit, which I understand is proceeding well. Are hopeful to have the final results late August, early September. We reviewed a series of line item transfers. These are accounting adjustments that are used in order to keep budget balances clear as far as where money has been, could possibly be taken from other areas where it was needed for areas that weren't necessarily foreseen. For example, the Swayze gym roof needed to be replaced for $158,000. That was not budgeted for. There was not a reserve fund to cover that. So money was transferred out of other funds that had a surplus in order to cover that roof. There were also some special ed areas where there were unanticipated funds. Those money were transferred out of other areas to cover those costs. And there was some demolition work that was not budgeted that we had agreed to for the, on the seminary campus, the garage building and the white wood building, I guess is referred to as the science building. So we reviewed all of that, they answered all the questions that we had about it. And we made a motion to approve those transfers and it was approved unanimously. We also discussed a demolition proposal for hazardous waste. And there were bids that came in from various vendors. The best bid was from a company called Taylor Nixon, which is a DBA of New Hampshire Demolition, which is the company that we rewarded the demolition contract to. And they work hand in hand. Taylor Nixon will remove the hazardous wastes and the New Hampshire demolition will take down those two buildings. There was another proposal for removing hazardous wastes, also not from the seminary building, from the brick building that's part of that area. And that was a substantial amount of money, $120,000. There's no pending need to do that. So the finance committee recommended that we go with what's identified as option two, which is to do the hazardous waste removal in the garage building and the science building. And that cost was, Michelle, what was that, 20?
$15,000.
We also discussed a plan, which Tom talked about, to revise the Memorial School entrance, redesign there. And the substantial savings that had resulted by superintendent and the business administrator and a couple of other people going out and revisiting that plan, which apparently they inherited from a prior administration. And then redesigned it and came up with roughly $200,000 savings.
Just one quick correction, Phyllis, I believe that is the shop, not the science. Science is the brick section.
Oh, okay, so.
So the industrial arts building.
Yeah.
The white, the white, the two garages.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't want people thinking we're taking down the brick building. Okay. Public relations?
Public relations met on July 9th. And we just talked about our goals for the year, continuing to maintain a positive presence in the community and promote the schools. And we are ready to proceed with a board evaluation tool to be released out to the public so that we can continue to grow and improve as a board. So I'll be bringing that forward at the next meeting for approval.
You've also got personnel?
Personnel also met on July 9th. Personnel looked, our primary focus has been in the spring to look at the superintendent evaluation process and update that. So we worked hard to review the current evaluation form, the NHSBA evaluation form, the evaluation of several other districts, superintendents, as well as our superintendent's job description. And we were able to revise our superintendent evaluation form to something that we think will be a good tool. That is also ready to go and we'll be bringing that forward at the next board meeting for approval so that we can move forward with evaluating our superintendent in a timely manner. And the next meeting for both personnel and public relations is September 26th. We have public relations at 4:30 and personnel at 5:00 and the public is welcome to come to those meetings.
Kind of question for Karen. Could you forward the information about the evaluation forms to me? The revisions you're planning, so I can look at those.
Yep, they'll be going to-
To the policy manager.
Yep.
Okay, great. The seminary task force has moved from the information gathering phase into the negotiation phase and we're making good progress. And our next meeting is August 21st at 8:30.
Are we going budget?
Essentially, no report, we haven't had a meeting.
Just quickly, a couple of people asked me, how's the negotiations going? I don't know, we don't know. That is absolutely, I guess about secret, I guess is a good way. Only the people involved in the negotiations are involved in that. So that I know there's a bunch of information floating out there. Nobody knows anything other than the people who are actually physically involved, so.
When you say negotiations, you're talking about the-
I'm talking to teachers' contracts. And I believe it's wood staff also. So just to blow any rumors that I've heard out there. Adam, how we doing?
Good, so the student council is set to meet at the high school on next Tuesday, August 21st. All the class councils are working hard, getting ready for homecoming, getting ready for the school year. Yeah, and everybody's looking forward to starting the school year this year. At the ground running.
Things have changed since I taught here.
Oh yeah.
Probably because I'm not here, right?
No.
Okay. Old business, we now have a report by the New England School Development Council, we call it that, and it's a presentation, so we're ready when you are.
Okay, thank you.
And I will get out of the way. Oh yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Okay, well as we're getting set to connect, first of all introductions. My name is John Kennedy, I work with Nezdeq and my colleague-
Karen Le Duke. Nice to meet you.
And we have thoroughly enjoyed working on the project. We would like to compliment the district for engaging in an advanced planning project. That's a very important first step. We also would want to thank the administration, town government officials, and all of the contacts that we had. People were tremendously enthusiastic and helpful throughout the project. So we can't say enough about that, it was very encouraging. Just a little bit about Nezdeq. We, this organization has been in operation for over 65 years. It emanated initially out of the Harvard School of Education. We are a nonprofit and currently our central office is located in Marlboro, Mass. And our primary function is to help districts solve problems. So we're engaged in a number of activities with regard to that. We are involved with executive searches and also strategic planning. We do enro- Okay. We do enrollment projections for over 280 districts throughout New England on an annual basis. We also do demographic studies and facility studies. And so the last three of those activities are actually very pertinent to this project. We will be presenting the results of our study this evening. And once we have completed that, we certainly would be open to questions from the board. So with, excuse me, without further hesitation, I'm going to move along. And you can take a look at the project team very briefly. And then on to the introduction. And just in terms of the scope of the project, we were involved with an enrollment analyzed municipal, we did an enrollment trend analysis and in doing so, we analyzed municipal records and also data provided by town officials. And I can't mention enough how helpful the town officials were. We also talked to local and regional realtors, real estate agencies or sources who provided us with substantial information. We analyzed HUD data with regard to permits, state of New Hampshire and US Census Bureau data. So those are the major sources. We also did an instructional program and facility analysis. And with regard to that, we took a look at present and planned programs for the school, school district. And we also, Karen and I also visited each of the schools while in session and met with the building principals. We had provided to them a template, a question template in advance. And we received the information from them and we did a walkthrough of the school where the principals were able to point out particular information points that they had made. And although the project is not geared toward a capital assessment, capital needs assessment, we did gain information from the building principals and the leadership with regard to capital needs and in those cases, we included it in the report. Now at the end of the report, we're providing to you options. And this is options that are based on the information that we received from demographics, enrollment projections, and our capacity analysis, also tied to programming needs. And so we hope that this will provide an opportunity to develop a long-range facility plan. The alternatives that we will be presenting this evening, the options, will include a bulleted outline description of the option and then also an indicator of what we view to be the advantages and the challenges with each of the options. The options, this is a very, very important point, are designed to serve as a catalyst for further analyst, analysis and discussion. And therefore, this document should not be considered as an end product, but rather a beginning point for future planning. Okay. Next, we get to the demographic analysis. And with the demographic analysis, we get to the most important factor with regard to demographics having to do with school district enrollments, and that is of course births. It's important to note, those children born this year will have an impact, assuming they continue to live in the community, will have an impact on the Sandbourne Public School District for the next 17 years. The same would be true, I guess we could say, if the birth rate declined, that would have an impact for the next 17 years. Because of course, most graduates are 17, sometimes 18 years old. So that's an important point. If you take a look at the three bullets there, you see that births within the three communities, and we took a look at all three, have averaged 122 a year back in 2002 through 2006. That was during the economic boom. Take a look at the third bullet. And you can see that births have significantly declined since that time period. And as a result of that, there is almost, not quite, but almost a 40 student per year decline in births. All right? And so that is a major point. Now, the millennial generation is now the child-rearing generation for a good part. The generation X is still part of it. But the millennial generation born between, born between the time of the 2000, excuse me, 2012, excuse me, prior to that. They are approximately, they're entering their 37th year at this particular point. Born from 1982 to 2012, 2006, there's some disagreement. And there always is in terms of how long a generation lasts. But they are, they are the child-rearing generation at this particular point. They have had, they have married much later. Marriages are closer to 28 to 32 years as opposed to 22 years. And the other point is they have the, a significantly lower number of births than any of the past three generations. So this is a very important factor. Okay. With that, but remembering now, births are the key factor, the number one factor in terms of projecting enrollments. And the births, you know, as we take a look at births, we're looking into the 2030s with the birth certificate, with the birth statistics that we currently have. So that's very important. HUD permit information is also important. And you can see that the housing permits, and take a look at 2001 to 2007, and then take a look at the downturn, and you see that they were down, and this is a compilation for the three communities, down to 37 per year. And we do realize obviously that of the communities, Fremont has a less significant impact in terms of enrollments because of the great configuration organization. But then the HUD, single-family permits have increased to 66 per year average during 2013 through 17. Now, we spoke to the planning departments in each of the communities and we were back in touch with them within the past several days just to determine whether or not any significant changes had occurred since we talked to them at the end of the, back in May, June. And the information that you see here comes from the planning departments. And it has to do with what's happening in the, in the planning stages. And for Kingston, they have under construction one five-lot subdivision, one two-lot subdivision. All right? And so that's a total of seven single-family homes that have been approved and are either under construction or awaiting construction. A six-lot continuation is still under review and has not moved forward. So that's a total of seven permitted in Kingston. Condo units, okay, there is one six-lot condo unit. There is also an over 55 potentially moving forward. However, they do not have the details on that. And there was another project approved, and we saw this in our most recent look at the HUD data. And that was for 58 units. But that is for the assisted living facility that will be located at the former Hannaford site. And so we were in communication with the planning department within the last week about that. And they said yes, but that is unlikely to have any impact on school enrollments in that, in that particular case. With regard to Newton, you can see that there were no single-family condominiums or apartment projects. And I use the project word there, under construction. Our most recent conversation with the Newton Planning Department indicates that there have been, over the past few months, five single-family units permitted and are moving forward with construction. But these are not major projects. And then with regard to Fremont, we found that in Fremont, there are currently, and this is based on our most recent conversation, 19 single families moving forward, single-family units. 10 are part of two subdivisions that are totaling 10 units. And the others are just individual single families moving forward. So a total of 19. And so therefore, if we take all of the information there and look through it, we see that- see that, excuse me, the numbers do not indicate a tremendously significant number of single-family units going forward. And the other point that was made to us in several instances by the planning departments is, these communities, in terms of buildable land, are starting to get closer and closer to buildup. Not that there is not land available, but the land to be developed is much more expensive because of either ledge, or wetlands, or things along those lines. So that's a factor that tends to impede construction. All right? And then, in terms of Fremont, with regard to a twenty-lot condo development, all right, has just recently been approved. And we were told that three of the buildings, each building will have four units, and three of the buildings are going to be going forward fairly soon. Okay? All right. We did ask each of the planning departments, are there any major factors impeding or accelerating future development? Sometimes, that has to do with, you know, extension of commuter rail, or highway, or something along those lines, or the moving in of a major employer. And they indicated that, all of them indicated, there were no major factors in the works that they were aware of at that time. Next, obviously, another important information factor is realtors, and we had information from local and regional real estate sources. And this is very important. During the past years, or few years, actually, all three towns have experienced a significant uptick in terms of single-family existing home sales versus four or more years ago. Okay? In all three communities, days on the market have diminished. We have seen this in lots of places throughout New England, and it is definitely, definitely a seller's market. As a result, inventory, and this is a key point, as a result, though, if a home is properly priced and in good condition, it may sell within a couple of weeks with multiple bids. That's the situation in these three communities. However, inventory is very low. Well, what we have found, and this is true across the country, Generation X bought starter homes when they were young. Not most of them, but many, many, many of them are still holding on to their starter homes. Generation X is not as much as the Boomers were into McMansion purchases. And as a result, the inventory for starter homes is very limited, because Generation X folks are holding on to their starter homes. Now, another point. And this is interesting, couples in their late forties and fifties are reported to be trying to move to the Sanborn area, from places like Manchester and Portsmouth, where jobs have, especially tech industry jobs have increased, and where home prices have increased significantly. So what many of those couples are thinking is, we own a home in one of these communities or near one of these communities, our home value has skyrocketed in recent months, and we don't know how long this is going to last. Why don't we take advantage of the equity that we have, and let's move to the Sanborn area because it's with an easy commute, generally speaking, no commute is ever easy, but generally speaking, and we could purchase, and we could, you know, that would be very convenient for us. So, the other thing that's happening is Boomers in this area are saying to one another, we also have gained a lot of equity. And we're not twenty-five anymore. Why don't we sell our existing home? And it's a, it's not a big, big place, but we could sell it, and maybe we could purchase a starter home again, or a condo. Result, demand among people who are in their forties and fifties, coming from the Manchester and Portsmouth area, and also from Boomers, who are looking to downsize to a starter home, is extremely high, and these folks, according to the information we received from the Realtor, they're outbidding in Sanborn, the millennials, to a large degree. And as a result of that, the communities in Sanborn are not seeing a lot of millennials coming in as homeowners or even renters. Now, an interesting statistic, we went to the U.S. Census Bureau American Community Survey, and it indicated that between 2012 and 2016, the percentage of underage thirty-four homeowners and renters within the three communities declined from nine point nine seven percent to only four point three percent. That's a major decline. Not that the nine percent was a high number, but this brings it down to a very, very low number. Those are the thirty-four and under homeowners within these communities. Okay? And the ownership among Boomers did increase. Okay. This demographic analysis is important. Okay? It shows that sales in 2017 were two hundred and eighty-eight total among the three towns versus three thirty-five in 2016, and then, of course, you can see what it was like at the very end of the recession. But the point is that last year, 2017, these sales numbers were down. Part of that is explained by the fact that inventory is lower. Okay? That takes us through the demographic analysis. Next, we go to enrollment projections. And my wife said to me before we left today, please do not read every one of those to all of these people. And so, we'll, we won't do that. But if you take a look, and if you take a look at this area, I can show you. All right, right in there, you can see that in the past decade, there was a decline in enrollments of three hundred and sixty. That was in the K through twelve. And where did it happen? At the high school level, it was a decline of eighty-nine. At the middle school, it was a decline of eighty. But at the elementary, K through six, it was a decline of just under two hundred, one hundred and ninety-one. So that decline in enrollment is working its way now through the school system. Okay? Remember, seventeen years. All right? So that's an important point. We're going to, the other point I want to make before we leave that, sorry, is, take a look at births. Two thousand two, one hundred and twenty-four. Two thousand three, one twenty-seven. Then take a look at two thousand eleven and twelve. Very, very significant decline in.
Can you read that? Can you tell us those numbers?
Pardon me?
We can't see.
Ninety-five and ninety-seven.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five and ninety-seven. Okay? So it's a very significant decline. All right? Now, we're going to skip some slides because the, or we're going to skip the next slide. It's just a, and we're going to move to projected enrollments. Okay? With the projected enrollments, all right, we are projecting K through twelve, again, excuse me, a decline, and the decline will be four hundred and twenty students over a ten-year period. Yes.
I just wanted to let the folks in the audience know that this will all be on the website. It's a lot of paper, so we didn't want to print a lot of copies. But certainly, if someone does not have website access and would like a copy, we will print one for you today. So I just, and I also thought it was important to note that the enrollment projections that we have today from NASDAQ ten years ago were off by one student, which is pretty unbelievable. I think that was a little bit of luck, right, John? But that's pretty good. So I mean, certainly, it just lends credibility that ten years ago, they did this study, and it was off by one student as of this year, and it looks, but it's going to be.
And I think it is important to say that our enrollment projections are generally effective. I don't think if they weren't, that we would be having two hundred and eighty districts asking for them on an annual basis. But they're, they are subject to error, and also, factors affecting enrollments are subject to change down the road, and that'll be an important point that Karen will be making in a few minutes. In terms of off by one, I will certainly present that information to my colleague who does our enrollment work. His name is Donald Kennedy, and so, he and I are not related. He usually makes it a point to tell people. But the point is that, you know, we have had some tremendous success. We had an enrollment analysis of middle-school age students in the city of Providence past year, and it was off by, I believe, twenty-two. And the city of Boston, at one particular point, was off in the middle-school range by a hundred and twenty. And that's for the whole city. So, you know, we tend to try to be on track as much as possible, and that's an important point there. In terms of the decline, four twenty, where's it going to happen? It's going to primarily happen right there, nine through twelve. Because the decline that started so many years ago is now working its way through the system. And so, the enrollment at nine through twelve is projected to decline by two hundred and twenty-two students over the course of the decade, excuse me. And at the middle school, a hundred and four, and at the K through five, a decline of ninety-four. All right? So things are reversing. What we saw, and that, I'm sure, makes sense. Births are going to continue to be under a hundred, and that obviously is a major difference from what we saw earlier. Okay? Now, we're going to move all the way to the end of the enrollment projection information, because I believe we've covered everything that's important. These are mainly just tables. And I would like to now turn this over to Karen, who will take care of the capacity analysis, information preliminary. And this is the second portion of our report, and the third portion will be the options.
I think it's important to define for you how we define capacity. We look at it as the building as we count the rooms. We look at the instructional classrooms in each building, how a principal would schedule children into each of those classrooms. Architects look at square footage, we look at the instructional classroom, which is a little different. We also look at the current operating capacity. So you can see at the first bullet, the current occupied, operating capacity is based on your suggested class sizes, your guidelines for pre-K, kindergarten, grades one through three, and grades four through twelve. And we'll look at each of those classrooms in each of the buildings, multiplied by those factors, and we come up with the current operating capacity. We also look at the current building use, including any deficiencies, which could be, there's a lack of storage, there's a lack of office space, but we also look at if there are any portables. Portables have a defined lifespan, so we'll talk about which schools do have those portables. Then we calculate what is known, we know, as the planned operating capacity. And the reason we look at that is to think about what is the 21st century educational programming that will happen in this building going forward. We look at it in case you want to look at future construction purposes. We're going to correct for any deficiencies we see. We're going to look at making sure there's enough core and specialized facilities, which is the gyms, the nurses, the administrative offices, the cafeteria. Assure there's parity and equity amongst all of your buildings. We're going to eliminate temporary facilities, and we'll show you how we do that, and to assure that it meets current code requirements as, as we can. We also review the systems, inclusive of parking, infrastructure, maintenance, and instructional technology. So we'll report on those in the upcoming slides. We also advise that for long-term planning, districts maintain a minimum ten percent capacity growth, and that's shown here on this chart. So here is Bakersfield Elementary School. It's a pre-K to five school, you know that. It's twenty-nine acres. It was built in nineteen forty-one, with additions in nineteen eighty-eight and two thousand and six. There are twenty-one interchangeable classrooms, which I'll explain to you in just a minute. And we are, we based our report on last year's school year, so two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. So our enrollment is based on the October first, two thousand seventeen enrollment. So here's the current and planned operating capacity for Bakersfield Elementary School. On the left, you'll see that current operating capacity. There are two half-day pre-Ks. I multiplied it by your general class guideline of seventeen, and that equals thirty-four. Three Ks, eleven grades, one through three, and six grades, four through five, for a total of four hundred and fifty-eight. So that's your current operating capacity. We did not see any portables, or deficiencies, or storage, or offices here, so the planned operating capacity at the Bakersfield Elementary School matches the current operating capacity. And if you add up those numbers on the left, there are twenty-one interchangeable classrooms. We also looked at instructional spaces, the twenty-one interchangeable classrooms. There's an art, music, and a technology maker space room. It is important that those educators have their dedicated space, and it's kudos to Sanborn District that those educators do, because it's, it's a better environment for students to learn in that, in that dedicated space. The core facilities, there's a cafeteria, auditorium, gymnasium there. The meals are prepared on-site, there are three lunch waves, the curtain opens up for more seating. There's a library media center there, and there's also a gymnasium with two teaching stations and accommodating the two educational PE classes. For administrative space, it's important to outline these, because these are how the leaders of the building and the support staff assure that the school runs smoothly. There's a principal's office, assistant principal's office, two spaces for administrative assistance, a conference room, which can sometimes be cramped, a full-time nurse's office that contains the two-day beds, but there is no private exam room, and there's a teacher lunchroom and a teacher workroom. Support staff is an important element of any education environment. And I will go through more detail with Bakersfield, and then, for the subsequent schools, you'll see that that support staff is listed. But I will point out where some of the spaces are inadequate. There's a full-time guidance counselor, a contracted psychologist, the pre-K coordinator, full-time speech. The part-time speech shares a space with a case manager, and was deemed inadequate. There's a contracted OTPT, there are three resource rooms, one full-time mathematics enrichment educator, a reading specialist, and their space is adequate. There's two total-one math ELA pairs, a case manager, and the last space that is inadequate is for the half-time ELL educator, even though it's a low-incident district. Instructional administrative technology, amazing that this is a 21st century school with one-to-one environment for students. That's the wave of the future, it's the next step, so you're already there. Classrooms all have interaction, interactive, projective devices, which is an important component of teaching and learning. The Wi-Fi access is reliable, and it's important that the special ed plans, health records, grading, and the attendance is computerized. health records, grading, and the attendance is computerized. For ADA handicapped access, we look at curb cuts, main handicap parking, restrooms, lever door handles, and the route of travel in the building. For those five things, those of you who are familiar with Bakersfield, the front main entrance is not handicapped accessible, but there is another door that is for which people who need that can enter there. We also look at plumbing, major systems and maintenance, plumbing, electrical, HVAC, windows, doors, flooring, walls, and the roof. The inadequacies is the HVAC is reported as needing improvement as the third-floor rooms can get hot in the warmer months. We find that in a lot of schools, that those third floors, second floors get hotter. But the electrical system, while Mr. Snyder reported it as satisfactory, the length of the electrical line from the street creates a potential for failure because of the length. But that's being looked at. For site information, it's parking. Parking during the school day is fine, but what most schools find is that event parking needs improvement. And at Bakersfield, they'll park across the street. And that areas for pickup and drop-off are reported as needs improvement. Preschool pickup and drop-off at the main entrance causes traffic concerns. And the same for when their preschool drop-off and pickup has the proximity to traffic, the main street there. Storage is an important part of any school, just like in your home. So storage for classroom supplies, custodial supplies, administrative supplies, and kitchen supplies is adequate. But Mr. Snyder did feel that the administrative record storage was inadequate. So now we move on to Memorial School. Memorial, again, is pre-K to 5, built in 1950. You can see the list of additions, the list of renovations. And you'll also notice that modulators were added in 2000 and 2004. Two of those modulators are attached, two are detached. And these are considered something that we would put in for our planned operating capacity as a deficiency because modulators are not a long-term solution. It is a short-term solution. At Memorial, there are 17 interchangeable classrooms, and that October 1 enrollment was 268. So if you look at the current operating capacity, it was calculated, as I had noted, for Bakersfield. But you'll notice for the planned operating capacity, the footnote. Five classrooms were taken offline, four for the portable classrooms, and one classroom for storage, which I will go through. So that planned operating capacity is for 253. The instructional spaces are a lot similar -- I want this moved -- to what you saw at Bakersfield with the music band and steam room, the cafeteria, library media center, and the space for the PE educators. The administrative spaces are all adequate except the nurse has limited storage and no private exam space. The support space, you can see the list there. The space is adequate except the ESL educator is in one of those portable classrooms. Instructional administrative technology is similar to Bakersfield. And the ADA handicapped is also. But I meant to notice on Bakersfield and also at Memorial is that the classroom restrooms are not handicapped accessible, but the main ones are. So for major systems and maintenance at Memorial, most is satisfactory. The windows are reported as needs improvement. Some of them are older throughout, and some of the hardware needs replacement. The doors are reported as needs improvement. Some of the roof has some linkage with some tiles needing replacement. But that has been reported to the prepper department. And the flooring is needed as needs improvement because of some of the tiles are lifting in the hallway. We see that in some of the older schools. Again, parking is reported as needs immediate attention. It's not adequate for holding daytime activities. And there is a shared entrance with the middle school. You know that if you've been over to Memorial. Again, event parking, there just isn't enough space on both sides. Areas for drop-off and pickup are reported is not enough space for cars during that time. They back up on the main road. I know there's a police officer there. The bus pickup isn't on the front and the side. So it's kind of a one-access road in makes it difficult for that flow for the day. And the storage for classroom supplies is reported as inadequate. The only storage is in the classrooms. Custodial supplies is inadequate. And storage for administrative supplies and records is considered inadequate. Because of that reason, we decided to take another classroom offline. So now, John, we'll talk about the middle school and the high school.
Okay. All right. First of all, the Sandborne Middle School, currently grades 6 through 8, and constructed in 1978. And then you can see the additions. And in 2002, the modulators were added. And the interchangeable classrooms, including science, is 20. And the enrollment as of October 1, 2017 was 335 students. All right. Next, in terms of capacity, we do a little bit different measure with high schools and middle schools for some fairly obvious reasons. In the middle schools, the students are in the same room throughout most of the day except for when they are traveling to gym or something along those lines. In the middle school setup, as you well know, I'm sure, they're moving from one subject area to another during the course of the day. And there are also other factors that come into play. So what we do is we totaled them. And then, based on the fact that teachers have prep periods and so on and so forth, we take the total. And we make an adjustment to that when we get to the planned operating capacity and the current operating capacity. Now, when we get to the planned operating capacity in the school, currently, there are... Attached to the school are six modulators. And so therefore, the modulators are now in the, you know, reaching the 16-year age level. And we find that modulators frequently do not go much beyond 20 years. That's a kind of a norm. And so therefore, we did not want to include them in a long-range plan that would take you into the 2030s. So that's a factor there. And so the planned operating capacity of the building is 399 students, with those factored in, and one room taken offline for storage. Okay. Getting to the instructional spaces, I'm gonna take you through a similar route that Karen did because this section is pretty similar. We list the full-sized classrooms. We list the science classrooms. One science lab is shared, one art room, two music rooms. And then we have the core facilities. And you notice it's a gym-a-cafeteria area. Okay? And so the cafeteria has a capacity of 130. There is a warming kitchen. The food is actually prepared off-site. Three lunch waves. The gym has two teaching stations and a divider, and also a wellness space. However, the locker rooms are there, but not functioning. No auditorium performances are at the high school. Okay? And the library media center can accommodate one class. Administrative spaces are generally adequate. However, conference space is viewed as sometimes being tight. And the nurses station, just as Karen mentioned with one of the other buildings, no private exam area. And the restrooms in the nurse station restroom has no handicapped accessibility. There are two-day beds. And the workspace, teacher workspace, is viewed as adequate. With regard to support staff, all support staff spaces are viewed as adequate. You can see them listed there, with the exception of the .5 social worker, which is used as conference space. And also the OTPT, which has no designated space and uses speech and language or a special ed area. So those are the only two areas that are problematic under support staff. With regard to instructional administrative technology, 24 computers per classroom. So again, you folks are right on. And this is one of the best technologies situations that we have seen in our travels. So congratulations. That's excellent. Wireless accessibility throughout the building, ADA access. Some of the toilets are in need of improvement in the sense that they may not have enough turnaround space for a wheelchair, obviously. Most buildings that were designed prior to 1993 are not really designed to meet ADA requirements. Okay? But they do have levered door handles, closed-fisted crash bars. And so generally speaking, it's in pretty good shape that way. Major systems, and this is important to note. The major systems in the building are, in many instances, original. Okay? And so we're looking at a period of time of 40 years. And so the plumbing is viewed as satisfactory. However, some is the original, and there are some leaks, pipes leakage, and so on. The problem that often occurs with a building that's 40 years old, what we've seen, is that replacing equipment can be difficult because parts are not available if it's 40 years old. It oftentimes becomes a problem. HVAC, just as the case in just about every school, very warm in the late spring and early fall during that time period. Electrical system experiences overloads. Most buildings' classrooms constructed in the 1970s had three or four outlets. That was it. And as we know today, that's not enough. And so frequently, those buildings do experience overloads. The windows are the originals, and therefore, they are single-pane and not energy-efficient. And they are reported to need immediate attention. The roof is reported to be in need of improvement, especially in the area of the modulators. And I think there was some discussion about that. But this is not uncommon with modulators or portables as they get into the, you know, 16, 17, 20-year range. Okay? Floors and walls are reported to be satisfactory. Site information. Parking is viewed as inadequate. But school day parking is satisfactory. So in other words, this is for events. And that's a fairly common thing. Pickup and drop-off are reported to be tight, especially in the afternoon. All right? And traffic is reported to be congested at the beginning and end of the school day. There's only one access road. And that makes it tough as people are coming and leaving. Okay? Storage is in need of improvement generally across the line. And that's why we made an adjustment in terms of the classroom being taken off for planned operating capacity. Okay? And here we are at the high school. Okay? 9 through 12 currently, and constructed in 2006. Therefore, as we go through, you will see it is compliant with most codes or all codes. And, excuse me. In 2016, the entry area was adjusted and renovated. And the October 1, 2017 enrollment was 644 students, 9 through 12. As we look at the capacity analysis, essentially the same format. There are currently... So you can see COC listed as 1018. However, there are currently two vacant classrooms. And so we added those on to the planned operating capacity. And that brought the planned operating capacity using the 75% formula up to 1056. Okay? So that's the POC for the high school. Now, you can see the high school spaces. And I'm not going to discuss this at length. Seven science labs, three art rooms, one recording studio, TV recording studio, three business instructional spaces, desktop publishing, robotics, career path, six phys ed spaces, counting fitness rooms. And you can see three tech ed, auto and welding, and two family consumer science spaces. Okay. Core facilities. Cafeteria currently has a lunch wave capacity of 350. However, that's primarily because of the limitation of tables and seating. It could be expanded beyond that. And that's important to understand. Does have a full kitchen. They currently use two lunch waves, two serving lines. Okay? Plus an hour card area. The auditorium seats 575. It has handicapped-accessible seating. The stage also has handicapped-accessible because in 1993, the ADA requirements came into play. So this was built in 2006. And so it meets the ADA standards. All right? Two gyms, three teaching stations, plus the fitness room. And then there are two other fitness rooms located within other parts of the building. Okay? Bleachers have a capacity of 1,200. And the locker rooms are functioning. Okay? And there are two sets. All right. The library can seat two classes. Administrative space, all are viewed as adequate. And you... Even the nurses station, because of when this was built, it has a private exam area. Okay? So that's important. All right? Then we go to the SAU offices, which are also located in this building. And they are on the second floor of the building. And four central office spaces are located near the guidance offices. And three are designated central office spaces that are located in the math car. All right? Instructional technology, again, one-to-one. Excellent. Excellent. And wireless accessibility throughout the building. Very important. ADA handicapped access, all satisfactory. And major systems and maintenance within the building are all satisfactory. Site information. Everything is satisfactory. Proximity to traffic is reported to be satisfactory. And there's a resource officer who directs traffic at the start and end of school. So there's some assistance for that. And storage. Storage space is adequate with the exception of classroom supplies. In some areas, they are... The storage is limited. Okay?
So now, we're going to look at options. And there are four options that we're presenting this evening. But first, we wanted to show you two options that we are not bringing forward so that you can understand our thinking around the entire process. So we reviewed those multiple options, but we didn't bring them forward because there wasn't sufficient capacity, wasn't sufficient capacity, that planned operating capacity for that school, in order for that option to go forward. The first one is to reconfigure, the format is, the description, grade level alignment, and we'll show you some charts with that enrollment as opposed to the planned operating capacity. This is to reconfigure elementary grades consolidating amongst two buildings in grade level pairs. Please note, we have this description for several of the options we are bringing forward. We are not bringing this one forward, which is grades pre-K to two at Memorial and grades three to five at Bakersfield. The middle school and the high school remain the same, because as you can see, Memorial Elementary School, if you look at that fourth column over, the planned operating, the projected enrollment is larger than the planned operating capacity, so the school cannot accommodate that number of students, and the chart illustrates that. At Bakersfield, grades three through five would work there. The other option that we did not bring forward was to create one pre-K to four building at Bakersfield Elementary School and to close Memorial Elementary School. Grade five moves to the middle school and to renovate the middle school. Use a grade level alignment of pre-K to four at Bakersfield, five to eight at Sanborn, and nine through 12 at the high school. And you can see that the projected enrollment exceeds the planned operating capacity, so the school could not house that many students. As John had mentioned at the outset, the options that we're bringing forward as a result of our analysis for potential alternatives, they're designed to serve as a catalyst for further analysis and discussion by the school board, the school administration, and the community. That said, this document should not be considered at any part of it. It's something that we're giving you some ideas to go forward. The format, again, will be a bulleted outline. You'll see it here. And then we'll talk about advantages and challenges, and then move from there. So this first option, there are four options. This first option has two sub-options. The first one is to reconfigure elementary grade levels consolidating amongst two buildings in grade level spans. Note here that we have pre-K to two at Bakersfield Elementary, grades three to five at Memorial Elementary, and the middle and the high school remain the same. You'll note here, the planned operating capacity exceeds the enrollment. The POC is larger than the projected enrollment at both Bakersfield and Elementary, except for the first three years, you don't, we don't hold the 10% at Memorial. So if we look at the next page, here are some advantages. There'll be sufficient capacity to accommodate at Bakersfield. The grade span configuration with all kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth together affords collaboration, coordination, communication amongst grade level educators to provide a more consistent approach to that learning for those students at those grade levels. With this option's grade level alignment, the middle and the high school will have sufficient capacity to accommodate enrollment from 2019 through 2028. Some of the challenges, as I had noted, through school year 21, there is insufficient capacity to accommodate grade level instruction at Memorial, allowing for the 10% planned operating capacity. What we do note is sometimes there are students who move in, sometimes students who move out, so it's something to consider. You will need to realign some school boundaries in order to accommodate all of one grade level at one school. There could be some increased travel time for some parents and students. There'll be expanded school busing for elementary schools, students, excuse me, and there'll be increased student transitions. Currently, they attend three buildings. They would attend four buildings under this option. The second, under option one, which is the same, reconfigure elementary grade levels consolidating amongst two buildings in grade level spans, but this time, the grade level alignment is pre-K to one at Memorial, grades two to five at Bakersfield, and then six to eight at the middle school and nine through 12 at the high school, as you currently are configured. You can see that the planned operating capacity exceeds the projected enrollment, even with that 10% capacity cushion at both Memorial and Bakersfield with that reconfiguration of the elementary grade levels. The advantages, again, there's sufficient capacity. The middle school and high school have the capacity to continue to accommodate six through eight and nine through 12, and we can afford that collaboration amongst the educators of those grade levels and the students. The challenges, again, are the same as before. We need to realign school boundaries, increase travel time, maybe some expanded school busing, and then the school transitions. So that's option one. Option two is to close Memorial Elementary School and reassign pre-K to five students to Bakersfield Elementary School, adding on to accommodate increased enrollment. So we'll assign pre-K to five to Bakersfield, close Memorial Elementary School, and the middle and high school, as I've said before, have sufficient capacity to accommodate that. You can see the grade level configurations, and this chart shows that currently configured Bakersfield does not have a planned operating capacity in order to be able to do that. That's why, when we look at the next page, with an addition of a minimum of five to seven classrooms, there will be sufficient capacity to accommodate grade level construction. And again, some of the same things. You could also see the potential utilization of the vacated Memorial facility by Newton Municipal and Civic Organizations for whatever they would certainly do that. I think it eliminates the need to realign school borders because all students go to one elementary school, and the newly constructed classroom spaces would meet current standards and codes. The challenges, the costs associated with construction of an addition, including design, permitting, site development, and building costs, and we have no idea whether Bakersfield can support an addition. That's further information that you would have to look at. It's just a suggestion we're making. The process timeline for the construction of that addition, there needs to be increased parking, busing, and the district will have to look to assure there's adequate space to accommodate art, music, specialized education, physical education, and lunchroom capacity. We did not look at that. So John is going to discuss the third option.
Yeah. And the third option would be the, all pieces of the third option, there are actually four alternatives within it. Each of them includes the closing of the middle school building, and the first would be pre-K through five at Memorial and pre-K through five at Bakersfield, and therefore, they would remain with the same grade level configuration that they currently have. All right? Six through 12 would be at the high school in this building. As you take a look at the capacity analysis versus enrollments, you can see that with Memorial and Bakersfield, we have taken the combined capacity of those two schools, and we have compared it to the projected enrollments, and you can see that there is excess capacity throughout, and you can see that there is 10% excess capacity throughout. And that 10% factor, I know I mentioned this before, but it's extremely important to aim for that, because without it, if there were a surge in construction within the community, or there were some major changes, or you had a situation where all of a sudden, one grade gets much larger, then what you're going to be doing very, very frequently is switching students from one elementary school to the other. And that is very, you know, challenging. Okay? And then as you take a look at the high school in this particular case, six through 12, with regard to that, in the earlier years, the capacity would be above 10%, but a little bit tighter, and then as times pass, as years pass, the excess above 10% grows significantly. Okay? Now, advantages, okay? Potential utilization of the vacated middle school facility for Newton Municipal and Civic Organizations, and that's something that we have seen occur in many communities that takes place. Operational savings due to the closure of the middle school, that would be something that the district would have to estimate. Assigned grade six, seven, and eight students would have to, would have access to a 21st Century facility, that should have said an eight there. Facility collaboration, and this is important, communication and coordination among grades six through 12. It would facilitate that, and that's very important, mathematics, science, and so on. And we see frequently, you know, the desire on the part of educators to be able to deal with, you know, grades six through 12 in a communication fashion, and obviously, this would facilitate that. It would provide grade eight students with an opportunity to participate in some high school programming. We see that in districts where this has occurred, you know, some courses and mathematics possibly, you know, earlier mathematical programming, world languages, things along those areas. And the high school does have adequate capacity to accommodate the grade configuration, and there would be a decrease in student transitions, all right, from the current three to a two transitions over time. And we know that that sometimes is a problem for some students if they are frequently transitioning from one school to another. However, there are challenges, and the challenge is Memorial would not have, we did a school-by-school capacity analysis as well. It's based on our estimates, and our professional Donald, who I mentioned, helped us out with that. And the Memorial would not have 10% excess capacity until 2021. All right? And then, this is a major challenge, realigning high school spaces to accommodate separate middle school and high school programming. Sometimes, we have seen requires that any of these following options or sort of changes would have to take place. Fewer classrooms may be designated for prep periods, thereby freeing up the classroom during prep time for instruction as compared to the present schedule. So as a result of that, individual classroom educators may have less frequent access to their classrooms during prep time. Class size minimums. We find that oftentimes, the class size minimum for such things as electives and AP classes, oftentimes, in a school district, you'll only have, you know, 12 students or 10 students signing up for AP physics. And yet, AP physics is a very important class for students who are going to be involved in engineering, as is the case with calculus and so on. And so therefore, we see that many districts put the limit, the class size limit, at 10 or 12, somewhere in that neighborhood, and that's with AP classes and electives. And that's an important point. Now, how do they get a, you know, do that without diminishing programming options? What we find is that oftentimes, district will offer electives in alternate years. So you can take it in your junior year, but you also could have taken it, you know, two years earlier, or something along those lines. Upper-level world languages very frequently are combined. We frequently find that, you know, French III and IV can be taught in the same classroom, and that the students' assignments are then individualized more so, you know, that does seem to work. And lastly, if, let's say, three students, or four, or five, sign up for a particular course, and the course doesn't run, then oftentimes, districts will provide for online opportunities to take the courses. And we know that students, at some point or another, in the course of their college experience, will be most likely taking some courses online. So it's also a way to prep some of the students for that. Okay? The challenge is continued. There'll be a possible need, depending on the setup, to relocate central office spaces to another facility from this one to accommodate middle school and high school instructional spaces, and it would require advanced planning. We find this with any school district that does this. It requires significant advanced planning for spaces for middle school, high school that are going to be shared spaces, gym, cafeteria, library, and other areas, nurses' office, and so on. So that's a major planning requirement that needs to take place. And also, should have mentioned, but just want to add it, need to adjust high school transportation routes, because obviously, they will be needing to accommodate seventh and eighth grade students. Okay? Next. Okay? B, all right? A little different, pre-K through six at Memorial Elementary and pre-K through six at Bakersfield. And in that particular situation, as we are taking a look through this, we are seeing that the enrollment situation would, and then seven through 12 at the high school instead of six through 12. We are seeing that pre-K through six at Memorial and Bakersfield would work after 21, 22. It would work to accommodate, but it would not provide the 10% capacity cushion in 1920 or 2021. But after that, it would. Seven through 12 at the high school, you can see that there would be a major excess capacity, including the 10% excess that would continue throughout. All right? Now, in terms of advantages with regard to this, these advantages listed are the same as the ones that we had listed previously, so I'm not going to go through all of those with you. All right? The challenges, again, the first one is a major one. You notice Memorial, okay? You would have a situation, beginning in 2021 through 27, 28, Memorial would have sufficient capacity to accommodate projected enrollment. It would not have a 10% cushion until 26, 27. However, if enrollments should exceed capacity due to unexpected growth in the community, or if a particular grade level enrollment should exceed capacity, it may be necessary to realign school boundaries and to assign some Memorial students to Bakersfield. So that's a concern that would need to be addressed at that particular time. Remaining information is, you know, pretty much similar to everything that I mentioned earlier with the other option. Okay? So now, okay, we also would have, you know, we're on to the next page here, we would also have to deal with this, okay? But we're dealing with grades seven and eight at the high school as opposed to six, seven, and eight at the high school. And therefore, it is likely that although these actions may be somewhat possibilities, they are less likely to all have to occur or to, occur to as great a degree as they would if grade six were at the high school as well. Okay? But there is that possibility. And there also might be that possible need to relocate the central office, although that diminishes somewhat because grade six is not included in the enrollment. Now, 3C, okay, says, now, close the middle school again, pre-K through one at Memorial Elementary, and grades two through five at Bakersfield, six through 12 at the high school. So as you take a look at that, in that particular situation, pre-K through one at Memorial is, takes, accommodates both the capacity versus enrollment is, takes, accommodates both the capacity versus enrollment, and it also accommodates the capacity with a 10% cushion versus enrollment all the way through. The same is true with Bakersfield. And then as you take a look at the high school, you see that the high school over the first two years is much tighter in terms of its 10% capacity cushion. And so that is something that would need to be considered. In terms of advantages, the advantages would be similar to what we had mentioned earlier. Nothing changes there. And then with regard to challenges, similar to what we had mentioned, except in this particular case where you have six, seven, and eight at the high school, there is a greater likelihood that this would be, you know, some of these would have to take place. And lastly, okay, we are looking at 3D under the 3 section. And 3D simply says, "Pre-K through one at Memorial, grades two through six at Bakersfield, and grade seven through 12 at the high school." And as you take a look at this, you see that Memorial continues to have the excess capacity, which exceeds even the 10%. In the case of Bakersfield with grade six there, during the first three years, there would be a, there would not be sufficient excess capacity to take care of a 10% cushion. After that, there would be. And in the first year with Bakersfield, there would not be sufficient capacity to take care of the enrollments. Okay? And then we go to seven through 12, and we've already shown this, seven through 12 would clearly provide a significant 10% capacity cushion at the high school. Advantages are similar to everything that we have listed previously with advantages, challenges. All right. First year, school year, there is not sufficient capacity at Bakersfield for this option. And for the first three years, there is not sufficient 10% capacity cushion. If, once the middle school was included at the high school, seven and eight at the high school, there would be less likely an impact in terms of some of those changes that we had talked about. Okay? Including the possibility of relocating the central office, but those are all possibilities that still would exist. Okay? And that takes us through option three, A, B, C, and D. This brings us to option four. And option four is relocation of the central office to one wing of the high school. And the idea there is advantages, consolidation of the central office spaces to one area with a separate entrance and provide opportunities increased, for increased collaboration, communication among central office staff. And it provides a more contiguous instructional spaces for students and staff. Currently, I'm sure you know, the central office is on the second floor and it is spread out over, some located near the guidance offices, as I mentioned, and others located very close to student programming areas. The possibility could be reviewed, and we're not suggesting that this would necessarily be the alternative, but a possibility could be taking a look at the first floor wing. And it does have an exit. And taking possibly the first four rooms that are instructional spaces on the first floor wing and using those rooms for central office spaces, then there would be a possibility of blocking it off so that there could not be immediate access to the high school and without, you know, not blocking it off so there wasn't a door, but making sure that it was locked and that someone would have to go through there. And then that would, that would take care of that issue. It would provide a much closer working environment for the central office, but it also would provide spaces up above on the second floor for the students. So that's the possibility. Challenge is potential cost of converting classroom space into office space and reallocating the high school instructional spaces to accommodate the central office in one contiguous location. And that takes us to the point where we are looking for questions and happy to try to respond either now or if we need to do some more research, we'd be happy to get back to you. But that takes us through it. As you can see, we have tried to deal with three major questions. Question number one, what do the demographics look like and how do they affect enrollments? Question number two, what's the facility capacity? And question number three, what might be some potential options that the community can address?
Any questions from board members?
A lot there.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a lot here. Where you've been involved in this sort of analysis and schools have acted on these options, what sort of reaction have they experienced from the public?
Well, I think, I think change is never appreciated initially if it is going to make some folks have, you know, maybe more travel time or issues along those lines. And also, it's, you know, it's, people are used to a certain set of circumstances and therefore, there is resistance. I'm sure you folks see that with lots of things tied to change. But the other issues that I think would, would potentially surface, there may be some concerns expressed with regard to grade six at the elementary. There may be some concerns expressed on the other side, grade six, seven, and eight, or grades seven and eight going to the high school. We have seen numerous circumstances, however, where that is the case, and it seems to work out very well if the planning is effective. Yes?
No, keep going.
I'm sorry. Those are some things that come to mind right off the top.
So if I'm hearing you correctly here, my interpretation of this report is obviously challenging how a lot of communities come together to provide adequate instruction and learning spaces that appeal to new recruiting and sustaining of families, of awesome and special staff members, and to deliver the passport to the future, which is of course education. My question first is, what have the economic development portion of the three communities been saying about all this? I've got three questions.
What's the?
The first question is like, how have the economic development committees, councils, selectmen responded to these discussions?
We have not had those discussions.
Okay.
Typically, NESTEC does not put out any options to anyone other than the school board first.
Okay. Yep. Are there financials tied to any of these options right now to, just out of curiosity?
No.
So I guess my subsequent question would have been like, what would it cost to go from SAS factory to adequate in all those different areas within those options? And then where is Fremont in any of these options? Or has Fremont not been discussed in any of these options?
Fremont in terms of a realignment and, and is, is not in the picture thus far. In other words, the enrollments and the projections that you see reflect only the students who are currently enrolled in the district. Therefore, the high school reflects, you know.
Do we have the metrics and the economics behind your studies to actually plug in Fremont into these options moving forward possibly without additional cost?
That would have to take place through the, the central office. We obviously, and I would assume that it would require that, you know, the central office determine, and the board determine how Fremont would be approached with regard to that. We obviously pay close attention and, and have a goal in mind of not putting out potential options which would require a community to change its, its school alignment.
You, if I may, you're dealing with what we have now.
That's right.
I have two last questions. These are really quick, I think, maybe. Are you guys currently working with the consolidation of education in Vermont? Because Vermont's been doing a awful lot of studies since 2014 about this very challenging that over 20,000 students leave the state or enrollment's gone down that far there. There's like nine board members, nine students per board member in that state, from which I think my studies have shown me. So my question is like, have you been involved? Has NESTEC been involved?
If not on a project of this type.
Okay. All right. And then last but not least, was there a cultural discussion at all throughout any of these things that, the discussions?
Meaning?
The impacts on the staffing and the options, you know, that type of stuff? Has there been a cultural discussion? Because everything that we're discussing today impacts the community and the culture. There's a lot of people breathing heavy, me being one.
Right. We, we, because, you know, for example, in terms of staffing especially, until the details were worked out in terms of what, you know, grade levels, what potential changes would occur, let's say for six, seven, and eight coming to the high school, it would not be possible to really anticipate how that would impact, you know, staffing. That would have to be something that would have to be done internally through the administration and, and central office.
Further questions? Okay. I'd like to take a break, but I have a feeling a lot of people who are here would prefer to go to public comment because we may have some people leave because they may be here just for this report. So at this time, I'm going to open this public comment. For those who are not familiar, public comment, we try to hold it to three minutes. And if you would, if you have a question, but someone previously asked the same question, if that satisfies your question, we appreciate you keep one question. There's a lot of you. I don't know how many questions we're going to get. Usually we have a time limit, but there's so many people here, I think we can extend it a little bit. There is another public comment a second time, but I'm sure you would like to leave after the first comment, rather than have to stay. I don't know where you have to drive to, but I'm assuming it's a ways. So we will open it to public comment. If you would step to the podium there and there's a microphone, we'll be more than happy to hear from you. Understand, one last thing, we're hearing this for the first time too. All right? So just so you know what we know. All right? So questions? Come on up there.
Just one basic question. When you were given the information on the district, were you given copies of our articles of agreement that created the district? Because your option two, I don't think would be acceptable under our articles and therefore it wouldn't be an acceptable option.
Option two, okay. So, so in other words, the closing?
Option two would close Memorial School and the Articles of Agreement require that an elementary school be maintained in each of the towns.
Okay. That was, that was not something that we included as a part of the option. So if that in fact is a continuing ruling, then that would not be, that would not be a viable option. All right? However, the other, the other issue that comes up with that is, you know, that we, we found that it was a possibility, but probably not the strongest of the possibilities because it would also require tremendous amount of additional transport and, and so on.
But certainly that's something that the, the school board would take under advisement.
Okay. Okay. I was just going to say, go on one.
Good question.
Yeah, no, I saw it, but I was making sure I didn't cut anybody off there.
Cheryl Gannon. I want to thank you very much for this very comprehensive report. I can't wait to get online and actually see those numbers and delve into it a little bit more. But one of my questions was, are you proposing that this would begin next school year, 2019, 20, which is, or I couldn't see the numbers up there, they were too small.
The, we provided information for 1920 in, in many instances. However, in terms of the realistic approach to it, some of the, some of the alternatives which have, for example, a, a closing of the middle school, for example, and then a shifting of the population, that doesn't require any structural change. However, the planning of that over the course of a time, the approval of it first and then the planning that would come into play, typically we would see that it would be most likely a, minimally a two-year process. In some instances where, for example, there is a suggestion that there would be an addition to a particular building, that addition typically takes, we find, four to five years to have a, an addition constructed because you have to get approval, you have to get support, financial support, and then go through the process. And so it varies depending on the option. And then you saw in some other instances that although there may, well, in, in some instances, there was not adequate capacity until a couple of years out, and then there would still not be the 10% capacity cushion. And we very, very strongly advise that a district try to maintain, to maintain that.
So if the start, the start was pushed out, some of those 10% buffers might be achieved if we go according to the projected enrollments, which are going down.
That's correct.
Right.
That was my next question. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Sandy Rogers, Osterlofen Kingston. So in the superintendent's report, one thing was missing for me, and that is what is the current enrollment that you folks have in each of the schools now?
We do that in September.
But there would be students registered. So how many students do you have registered in the district now?
I believe we use the October 1st.
Right. The October 1st numbers we usually do.
That, that number we usually use from the October 1st because that's the number we send to the state.
Correct.
Right. So that's, that's.
I was just curious what the registrations are right now in each of the schools. What is kindergarten looking like? Are we seeing an increase, a decrease? And just, it's a click of a button. How many are all in Memorial, all in Bakersfield, all in the middle, and all in the high school right now? Just to compare numbers because this was based on 2017. I'm just curious, we had 1601 last year. Are we still at 1,600? Are we? Are we at 1,500?
I'm not responding to public comment. I'll share the information in September.
Yeah, we have to put it.
We didn't, we're not prepared. I'm happy to share it. I can send it out tomorrow, put it on the website, but it's not accurate until mid-September because students come in and go.
Right. I know it's subject to change, but I just was curious. You just had an administrative meeting. I'm sure you must have discussed, you know, kind of where registrations. Didn't you say you had an admin retreat?
I'm not responding to public.
Oh. Was there an admin retreat?
Okay. Something I did not say to people. We do not respond rarely.
Okay.
I don't say all the time.
I would like to know what the current registrations are then for the district. Thank you.
Just to let you know, we're not trying to cut people off or not answer questions. We're trying to hide anything, but we rarely, except it's me, we rarely respond. It's called a public comment, meaning the public comments. We don't necessarily respond. And now that I've said that, I'll, we'll probably respond to something. No, Kami here.
Hi, I'm Kami Gluck from Newton, and thank you so much for this report. It was, it was great to have all the data together. And as Cheryl mentioned, it'll be interesting to see the details because the little numbers are small. But I, I just want to reply, respond to the superintendent's information at the beginning. It was good for me to hear about the priority of the Safety Advisory Council and, at his report in the beginning of the meeting here. Just as a reminder, yesterday was the six-month anniversary of the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas shooting in Parkland, Florida. And as we look at, I'm just going to remind the board, as we look at this report and how we are going to realign our grades in the schools and shift things around, I just hope we keep as our front focus, safety for our kids in these schools. One of the items you mentioned was the doors in Memorial, they don't all lock from the inside. I know in the old building that I'm in, in Exeter, that was an issue, and we had to replace all the door handles in our hallway because you need to be able to lock the doors from the inside. So I just hope as the board deliberates and talks about all this, we keep that as a reminder. So, thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
There, there are some, this is just a procedure that we typically follow, but in response to the, the woman's most recent comment, we will be providing to the superintendent a confidential memo which will note anything that is of a security nature that we have, may have noted as we've gone through. And I'm not saying that there would be a lot of that or maybe any of it. But the procedure that we have at Nezdeck is we never make a public comment about anything that is tied to safety or security because obvious, for very obvious reasons. And so if there were something that had come up, it would not show up in a public report. That get, but it does, if there is something that comes up, it gets conveyed privately to the superintendent.
Mary Seer from Kingston. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the board for appropriating the funds to conduct this study. And I'd like to thank Mr. Ambrose for, and Michelle for overseeing this process and commandeering it. It was a thorough report. It was long overdue, and I'm very grateful for all of you for setting it in motion. I look forward to further developments. Thank you.
I have, I have a question.
No, no, it's all right.
I didn't expect it to come to as immediate a level as it did.
Good, what do you got? You're, you're a public person.
I'm a what?
You're a public person.
All right. I've seen all too often and been part of communities and districts who've actually made this a really expensive paperweight. And going back to budget committee member Mary Seer's statement, this is a long overdue report. And piggybacking off of fellow board member, Mr. Baker, what is your advice to us and/or what do you see as adequate next steps to assure that it doesn't become a very expensive paperweight?
Well, I think, I think the important thing is to, first of all, for the superintendent and to determine who on the administrative staff will be reviewing and gain input with regard to the report. And then that information could be shared in terms of what the educational administrators are thinking about it and then passed on to whether you folks want to organize a, you know, once, once the, the details and some of the, you know, detailed questions have been responded to, then the next piece usually is that there is a subcommittee that reviews and gets that kind of information and input and then goes forward in terms of, you know, winnowing down, so to speak, what the potential options might be. But I think it's most important that the professional educators who are the administrative team have an opportunity to take a look at things, to provide input, to kind of nail it down. And then, you know, it gets, obviously before any, any final decisions are made, the board's going to have to make judgments and, you know. I'll take Pete's.
We can hear you.
I don't really need a microphone, but I'm pretty sure. Hello? Sorry about that. I think it's really important for everyone in the room to recognize that this is literally just the first pebble of this process. There are going to be many, many board meetings and conversations for the public to weigh in and for everyone to have a voice in this process. And I think it's really important for everyone to, this process will do one of two things. It will either bring our communities together or it will divide us. And the attitude with which we approach this process will define which one of those two things occurs. And I did also want to say that I, we listen to public comment and we consider it seriously in future agendas. And oftentimes, issues brought up in public comment do get put on future agendas, but typically I would agree with Peter, we, we don't respond because this isn't supposed to be a discourse. The item has to be on the agenda in order for the board to act. So we certainly will take any suggestions this evening into consideration and formulate future agendas. But I wanted all the folks out there to know that, that we hope you'll join us for more meetings so that we can come together and figure out what's best for our kids and the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on down. You're the next contestant on the prize list.
Thank you. Liz Beebe from Kingston. I appreciate the comprehensive information that you provided and to hear that your past record, you were within one student. I think that's very admirable. I also am a little confused about, and I think a few people here are, with the closing of the middle school. I'm a former student, and I remember double sessions with all the middle school and high schoolers in one capacity and blaming each other for any shortcomings in the school. I'm also very receptive to change, so I don't want to sound like I'm not open to all of these proposals that you've presented, minus one Mr. Doggett said does not fit our articles. However, I'm very confused at closing the middle school, which as a student, being the first eighth-grade class to graduate from that school, we were so excited to have a place to call our own. And in the past, I've heard of complications with too many students of all different ages being in an area. I do understand about having the younger students in the 21st century building, but I don't see any, anything addressing the shortcomings of the middle school and bringing them up to the 21st century so that all these facilities can be where they should be. And I was also hopeful that the 10% or more change in student population would allow better use of all the facilities so that we didn't have the crowding and shortcomings in the buildings that we currently have today.
Going once. Mr. Furlo. Well, all right. Ellie got in front of you there, fine. Nobody goes before you, Ellie.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ellie Alessia. I'm from Kingston, and I am a former school board member. I think what's happened tonight is tremendous for our district, and it is really an opportunity. When we talk about individual pieces of this plan that we may or may not like, and there are, I'm sure every one of us has parts we really don't like and some things we really do, we have to look outside the box. This is an opportunity for us as a school, district, community to come forward, get together, discuss those options. I would suggest that our superintendent and school board break down the aspects of this proposal in bite-sized pieces so that we can discuss them at subsequent meetings or subsequent forums and provide the information to the greater community at large. This is, we're going to have a lot of things we're not going to like, but we're going to have to work through it in order to reach consensus for what's good for our future. I remember when the middle school, we got a grant. There were some good folks from Newton who wrote a grant to get that middle school so we can get off double sessions over at the high school. But that was back in, what, 1980? It's a, thank you, Jim. It's, it was a long time ago. Our, our communities have evolved so much since then. So what was good then may not be what's good for today. And our board and administrative team have a lot on their plate to deal with, but it's a, it behoves them to listen to us. And they're going to have to put numbers together because economics have a real impact on what decisions are made. And while I don't really want to see schools closing, but we may not have a choice because we've got 400 less kids coming in the next 10 years and 400 kids less in the last 10 years. So that has an overall impact on all our, on all our tax bills and on our lives and on our educational community, which is most important of all. So just ask us, give them some breathing room. Not saying don't beat them up, I'm just saying just give them some breathing. So that we can.
Right.
No, he has nothing to do. He gets to go back to Marlboro. But I, I just want, I want people to understand there's a lot to be discussed, and you all have to assimilate that information just as well as we do. So when we see the reports tomorrow on the website, that's just the beginning, and I ask that you just break down that discussion so we can focus on different aspects of it and move forward from there. Thank you.
My name is Mark Furlo. I'm from Kingston, also a former school board member. I have, looking forward to the opportunity to see the detail on the report, definitely. I have a couple of things that will answer one question that was raised, things that we put in place about 20 years ago, long-range planning subcommittee of the school board. I didn't see that existing on the board committee reports tonight. Next to hiring the superintendent and setting the budget, that's probably one of the most important roles for the board. Ebs and flows as to how, how much work needs to be done at any, any point in time. The other thing is the gentleman from Nezdeck mentioned enrollment projections should be done every year. Well, interestingly enough, we developed our own enrollment projection model in the late 90s, and we updated it every year with the October 1st enrollments. And it was that model that was used when we were planning this building. And I don't know where that went, why that went away. Would certainly recommend that you research that and bring it back because that was supposed to be an important part of a tool that we would have every year so that we could see what the path forward was with respect to enrollments and its impact on facilities, budget, staffing, all the way around. Thank you.
Enrollments are a big part of it.
I don't know, Kami. Another thing was usually we get one shot, but go ahead, Kami.
This is a question for the Nezdeck people. So in the, in the options that you proposed of combining the middle school and high school, one of the challenges was the capacity of the cafeteria. So I'm just going to kind of bring that up as a concern. It won't affect any of my children, but will children be eating lunch at 9:30 in the morning? That's not really a lunchtime. So that's just something for everybody to kind of think about when you're blending those things together. So I don't know if you have any suggestions on that.
Well, I think specifically, no. But in terms of, there are a lot within New England, there are many districts which have seven grade, you know, the middle, middle school and the high school operating in the same building. And, and in many instances with the same administration or a shared administration. And so, and, and so it does, it can work. It's, but I think we've tried to point out, it's, it's not an easy process to bring it about. That's why in terms of the question, in terms of timing, it's probably not something that could be accomplished without extensive review and analysis to make sure that the goals are met. But there, there are some positives to it, and the positives simply are that it does work in some places. They have been able to make it so that all students feel a part of the, the building and, and the process. And it takes a group of students and it provides them with the opportunity to be in a facility which has been designed to meet 21st century needs. And so, but we are not saying, and would not want to be misquoted on this, we are not saying that we think that it's, you know, a, a quick process. It's something that needs very, very detailed analysis and study and making sure that it's done properly if that's what the board decides and the community decides that they want to do.
John LeBlanc from Kingston. Just a question on, I missed, I apologize, I missed the presentation on the demographics and the population decline, student population. Nezdeck's been around for quite, quite a while, I believe, 20-plus years at least. Have you gone back to other schools, like over the years that you've done projections on population and seen how well your projections 10 years out matched with what your original projections were?
We, we have had, well, I think what we can, what we can say is this, our projections typically are very, you know, much on. We believe that it's important for us, if possible, to, you know, our member districts get projections on an annual basis, and that obviously helps. We believe that the projections that we do are, you know, generally accurate, more than we have, as I said, over, we have over 250 member districts. Of those member districts, over 210 have members, have been members of Nezdeck receiving the enrollment projections for over 10 years. And so we think that this is an indicator that, you know, the job that we do with enrollment projections is viewed by our member districts as being a very effective one. Can there be errors? Yes. And that is why we strongly have advised that the 10% capacity cushion be put in place because we can't project what will happen down the road with the economy, nor can we project what might happen in terms of just some unanticipated changes that might come about with regard to construction or, there are factors that, that change over time. that, that change over time, but, uh, you know, I think that, we're very proud of the fact that, you know, that large number of districts, uh, keeps coming back, and many of the 40 or so, uh, that have not been members for over 10 years, uh, many of them have just come on board within the last three or four years, so they couldn't be members for, you know, but that's, that's.
I just didn't know if you went back and, you know, 10 years ago you projected X, 10 years on, how did X match with what you predicted 10 years ago type of thing, side of the coast, kind of?
Often, oftentimes it, it is, uh, you know, as I said, oftentimes it is very close, there are those instances, we, we did not project the exact time of the Great Recession, and, and as a result of that, you know, that had a tremendous impact on many things.
I think it's.
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to close this public comment, um, quick question. Okay. Um, if, depending on what eventually comes out of all of this, um, if we, once the consensus sort of aligns with, you know, certain options, if, if they happen to be a consolidation, I was wondering if the information that you have about schools that have done that successfully, if that's something you could share with the superintendent? That is. Anybody besides me want a break, say five minutes?
I do.
Well, if you do, we will. Michelle, you're up.
Perfect, um, we have, the, the next two items on the agenda are, are very quick, but do require board, um, authorization or approval, so the first one is the general assurances, and we'd be looking for the board to affirm the certification of these assurances, the document is an annual report or document, it was included in your packet, it lists the things that we say that we're going to do, that we assure the state that, that we will, um, be compliant with, so, that was previously signed, and at this point, I'd be looking for the board to affirm that certification, so I move that we affirm the certification.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous?
Perfect, thank you so much, the second item is a new contract with the state for the Student Assistance Program, our existing multi-year contract expired June 30th of 18, you have information in the packet, which is a summary, if you will, of the, uh, program that we would be entering into with the state, it's a continuation of an existing program, but the funding is less, we talked about that during the budget time, um, the contract has gone through legal review and insurance review, and what I'd be looking for at this point is the board to accept this contract with the state, so that we can, um, notify them of such. Move to accept.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That's a unanimous.
Thank you.
Seminary campus abatement, Tom, oh, that's my shit, they gave you wrong information.
And we actually, um, talked about this briefly under the Finance Committee report, so there was a, a summary of the different responses that came in for that proposal, it is part one of the demo project, if you will, we approved previously demo with New Hampshire demolition of that white structure on the seminary property, and this would be for abatement of that prior to, um, demo, so what was recommended by the Finance Committee was option two, which was abatement of the full white structure, not necessarily touching the brick building at this point, um, and we would be looking for the board's authorization and approval to move forward with option two for $15,000 to abate the white structure.
I move we approve option two.
Second.
Pick one, fellas, it was either Larry or, oh, I don't know. Taran, rather, is it, sorry about that, Taran? Okay, oh, Pammy, all right, um, discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous also?
Thank you.
Pam, how did you want to handle these?
We're tabling now until the next meeting.
Okay, your tabling number eight, four?
Eight, five, and eight, six.
Wait a minute, eight, four, and eight, five?
Eight, five.
Oh, I guess I had the old agenda.
That's okay, okay, that's all right, okay, second public comment. No one? You always have something to say, there we go, I know it!
Cheryl Gannon from Kingston, I see a new face up at the table there, and I don't know who that is, are you, is this person going to be introduced to us?
We're going to be having a non-public, um, and he just sat down early.
Thank you, that's the end of my comment.
Okay, um, I think, uh, the agenda, we have, I'm just going to say eight, four, and eight, five, fellas, who will be having an agenda on, I believe we are also going to be discussing, um, school board scheduled to reaffirm or adjust if needed, now that we're getting into the school year, excuse me?
That's actually eight, eight, five, I think, BE.
I got eight, four is BE, BEA, BEB, okay, all right, so that's, that's the same thing, okay, okay, I didn't, I just put the policy number.
Yep.
Okay, so we're all set on that, was there anything else we brought up that we want to discuss?
Board goals.
Pardon?
Board goals.
Board goals, okay.
The superintendent evaluation.
Superintendent evaluation.
Form and time, timeline for that.
Got that form and timeline?
And the board evaluation.
Thanks, I've been telling Philis all kinds of stuff this week.
Yeah, we have, we have others, I mean, when, when the superintendent and I sit down on, usually Wednesday, Thursday, we always come up with a few things, Philis always has five or six things for us, but anyway, things that come up over the next couple of weeks, um, anyone else have anything else that they can think of now, if not, of course, just let Philis know, yep?
Can we answer the public comment question of just opening day enrollment?
At the next board meeting?
Yeah.
Um, I'm happy to do it, but as I said in my comments, we really should wait until the second meeting, because.
Yeah, we're going to have people moving in, moving out.
Going daily.
Yeah.
Happy to answer it, but it won't be accurate.
I mean, if we've got a board, if we've got a, a, a building of 644 kids, and three kids move in, that's a half a percent right there, I mean, I know it's, but it go percentages, but, you know, things change, um, I was going to talk about earlier, even though we had the Nezdek, there is no direct correlation between number of students and teachers, it's close, if you have 75 students, and you have three classes for those, and you lose 15, that's 20%, well, you're down to 60, you kind of have two classes of 30 kids, I mean, you can, but 30 classes of, of, I mean, two classes of 30, you still need three teachers, so, there isn't necessarily a direct correlation, you know, um, and people need to understand that, that, you know, say, well, we lost 20% of the students in that class, yeah, but that doesn't mean you lose teachers, you know, you might, but, you know, okay, so anyway, um, all right, so next meeting agenda we've got, and I'm going to call that an announcement, okay, that concludes, not quite, I got to read this, um, the next San Barbara School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, February 5th, 2018, at 6:00 PM to usually 9:00 PM, in the library at, I'm sorry?
Did you say Sep-? Uh, okay. But it says September.
Did I misread something?
September.
September.
What did I say? Yeah, February.
It works for me for us to have a team, yeah.
Works, works, works for me, guys.
I was a really rigorous bud season.
Okay, ah, God, we only do September, Adam, why don't you correct me on that one?
My bad.
Uh, yeah, okay, let's try it at September 5th, 2018, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, in the library at the San Bart Regional High School, that concludes the public session, I believe, Larry, you have a motion?
I have a motion, I move that we enter non-public meeting for RSA 91 colon, what is it?
91A.
91A.
Colon?
Colon.
Three.
Oh, colon three, give me the number.
Two. C and E.
C and E?
Yes.
Am I correct in my answer?
Yep, that's what's on the agenda.
It's right here on the agenda, that's what I'm reading. RSA 91A, 32C and E.
Okay, got it.
I thought you had it there, okay, who seconded that?